This is a regular meeting of the City of San Francisco Planning Commission called to order. May we please have the roll call?
Commissioner Land?
Present.
Commissioner Faust?
Present.
Commissioner Clark?
Present.
Present? There you go. Commissioner Weininger?
Present.
Mr. Millen?
Here.
Commissioner Moore?
Here.
Commissioner Nash?
Present.
Mr. Orange?
Present.
Commissioner Oster?
Present.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is the approval of minutes from our regular meeting of July 22, 2025. I will entertain a motion for the approval.
I make a motion we pass the minutes for our regular meeting on July 22, 2025 with any necessary corrections.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Do we have any corrections offered by the commissioners?
I have one.
Under public comment, the gentleman's name is Henry Porter Field, not Porter.
I knew there was a correction. Is it?
Thank you, Mike.
Field as in F-I?
F-I-E-L-D.
Good.
All right. Any other corrections from the commissioners? And with that correction, all those in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes are approved. Next item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Are there any additions or corrections? And then I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda. So moved.
Support. More.
Anything need to be added? Then I will ask for approval of the agenda. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Our agenda is approved. First item is new business. This evening, we have a public hearing, J-25-2842, for a special use permit for public assembly headed as a wedding venue here for 1446 South Washington. Good evening. This is a regular meeting of the Planning Commission. This is a public hearing. We will now begin the public hearing to allow for special land use permit. The purpose is to address the commission with regard to the subject of the hearing, not other topics. Speakers shall address their remarks to the commission as a whole and not to individual commission members, city staff, or the audience. The applicant whose application is the subject of the hearing or their designated representative shall be the main presenter and will be allowed 10 minutes for their presentation. Each additional speaker commenting on the subject of the meeting will be limited to three minutes. Is there anyone here to comment on, present this case? Please come forward.
Hello.
I'm Mark Grischowiak.
Good evening. Can we go ahead?
So, looking to take what's home there, that's been considered the home, that is, was for many from 1937 to 99, run as a retirement home for aging women, and then has been a personal residence from 99 till currently, from Mr. Gary Foldesinger. But he had passed away last year, and it come to my attention that the property was going to be sold, and it fell on my plate as a very interest of something I think would be wonderful. I live right down the street from it, and looking to, I've put many hours into it, have already of looking into creating a 13 suite bed and breakfast, and then event venue, which would be weddings and other events. The establishment, the house itself would hold all of the bed and breakfast, all of the units in there, and it would also be for events up to about 75 people inside. There is a 32 by 80 garage that would be altered into a reception hall or event venue, and it would hold up to about 160 to 80 people inside with a large deck being added on, the covered deck with soft sides that could go up to about 250 people total. Events would be held always on the weekend, or if it was on a Thursday or Friday or weekday, the event, no events would happen before 5:00 p.m. Because we would need to use the public parking across the street, and would not want to interfere with any of the use of that during business hours of the city. There would be parking interior on the property for all people staying there overnight, for any of the clientele that's staying there in the bed and breakfast, and employees as Events, I put on here on the preliminary, one of the things I wanted to talk about is a suggestion was for them to end at 10:00 p.m. I would need it, I would find it very necessary to be later than that. All other wedding venues, I've researched in the area, many of them are open until midnight. Some of them close the earliest at 11:00 p.m. In order to be competitive, of course, with other venues, I would need to be able to be open to at least 11:00 p.m. I know the Norris Ordinance starts at 11:00, so no noise could be outside, especially outside of a building, after 11:00 p.m., and that would always be respected.
Is there anything else you wish to present?
No, I think it would fit very well there. The closest residence is about 1,000 feet away over on Holland, and about 1,500 feet is your next resident, and that's currently my house. So, I live next to the Montague Inn, who does have weddings, they advertise, and they go to about 11:30. I have no problems with it going to 11:30, because they only have them in the tents outside, so they are, all their music and everything is outside until they finish. Because when I moved there, I knew there was a, exactly what I was moving next door to, and stuff, and it's never been interruptive. It is what it is, so, if anything, I do the Macarena in my TV room sometimes.
Thank you, Mr. Grischowiak. Is there anyone else who wishes to comment on this petition for a special use permit? Is there anyone else who wishes to comment on the petition? Anyone for public comment on this petition only? Then I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing. So moved.
Support. More.
Moved and supported to close the public hearing. Any discussion among the commissioners for that part of the motion?
Oh, not for that motion. I want to ask some questions to the young man.
All those in favor of closing the public hearing portion of the meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That is the close of the public hearing. I will now entertain a motion for approval of the request in J-25-2842 for a special use permit. So moved. Oster?
Support. More.
It's been moved and supported. Is there discussion on the motion?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
I have a question.
At this point, we need to go out of regular order.
If you are going to ask the question of the applicant, then we need to go out of order.
I make a motion we go out of open session and to close.
I was going to say, maybe staff can answer the questions first?
Okay, well, let me see if you can answer. He said 75 beds.
No, 13.
13 beds for the bed and breakfast?
Yes.
13 for the bed and breakfast, and he wanted to do a hall, which is still a part of the house.
Well, the interior holds approximately, how many did you say?
The inside would hold approximately up to 75 people if there was a smaller event. It could be held inside the home.
Okay.
The hall is, would be detached by about 20 feet, but in another enclosed building.
Yeah, I knew I heard 75.
That building exists there now.
Is there now?
Yes.
So, can I ask the question of staff? So there's three buildings behind there, correct?
Correct.
So which one would be?
It would be the one with the overhead doors.
The doors, the newest?
Yeah, the newest, the newest building.
Okay.
Because all, the other one is down below.
Both of them are down.
Both, actually, both of them are down below.
So, okay, so, it's a bed and breakfast. Is it, it's not like with some houses that we was having problems with?
Short-term rentals?
Yeah, it's not really a short-term rental. It's just you come in and you...
It's not technically a bed and breakfast or a short-term, well, it is a short-term rental, but the staff is not going to be staying there, he's going to have staff there on shifts. So, no, the owner is not going to, like a bed and breakfast, where you typically have the owner staying there as well.
Right.
Yeah. In this case, it's a short-term rental, but there will be professional staff.
There, 24/7.
There, 24/7.
Commissioner Clark?
Thank you. I just want to clarify one thing. The reference was to 15 beds, but the application says 13, I'm sorry, 13.
13.
It says 13 units. I'm assuming that that isn't beds so much as that's, you know, you have couples and so on.
Yeah, yeah.
You could have more than 13 staying there, I would assume, but I guess that's something you might need to clarify.
That's a question.
Okay, I don't know the answer.
So we need to come out and close.
Commissioner Oster?
Yeah. So I've been in the home, and at one time, I think it had 29 bedrooms in the additional piece that was added onto the house. The whole house itself is like 30,000 square feet. So that's...
I think we need to, I think we need to ask.
Sure. Motion to go up. Okay.
I will entertain a motion to suspend our rules and...
Support. More.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to go out of regular order. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Now, commissioners, who would like to ask the palimpsest questions? Commissioner Clark?
Hey, I'll follow up on my question. Your application is referring to 13 units.
There would be 13 suites, yes.
Now, those may have more than one person in them, I assume.
I would assume most of the time, they would have at least two people in them.
Right, so the number of people could easily be 26 or even more.
Slightly more.
Yeah, all right. Well, that answers my question.
There would be 13 beds to answer, I think to try to finish answering that question. There would be 13 bedrooms with 13 beds. A few of them would be suites, in other words, they have a living space, and there would be a pull-out couch in there if somebody was bringing their children, or, you know, to have in there. There would be four suites out of those 13 that would have a pull-out couch. The rest would be single beds, or king or queen bed in each room.
Thank you.
Commissioner Moore?
So, you said specially beds you want to be in by 10:00, but you're 1,000 feet away from neighbors this way, and neighbor, and you're...
1,500 feet from mine, and about 1,000 feet from the closest other residence on Holland.
So you just went midpoint with your 10 o'clock?
No, the 10 o'clock, I believe, was just a suggestion, and so I am simply just stating that that would not be late enough. It would be, make it very hard for me to compete getting people to use my venue if they were able to go elsewhere and rent till 11:00 or midnight.
Commissioner Oster?
In other words, most weddings do not end at 10 o'clock.
That's about good rate.
Well, by the time we start dancing, it's usually 8:00, so, 8:30.
You're trying to cut your party off.
Mr. Oster?
Right now, we're just in a discussion with the applicant. What I was going to say is that there is a venue over by the self-serve lumber, they start at 10 o'clock, and they go to 2:00 p.m. in the morning, and they throw events there. So, I think your 11:30 is, well, generous, and that's in the neighborhood, surrounded by houses.
No, no, no. This is just a question for history. When that was the home, what was the capacity for the people in the home?
There were, actually, I heard the number come out, 29. There are 29 numbers on rooms, that there were 29 rooms. Six of them were in a lower-level basement that I would never use for this, for renting out. The basement will strictly be a basement.
And like right now, I think the Norris Ordinance in the city is 11:00 p.m.
Correct, yes. So, yes, respect-wise, it would always have to, any noise would have to never be outside of a building, or be able to be heard outside of a building from, just off the property after 11:00 p.m., is my understanding.
Okay, well, that's special.
Commissioner Clark?
Thank you. This was asked for staff. Was there a special reason that the 10:00 p.m. time was limited, or stated in our recommendation?
Just the thought that typically, events take an hour to wind down. I mean, I'm okay with moving it, and it was just a suggestion of my part. It isn't based on any ordinance or anything that we have.
So if we moved it to the quiet time to 11:00, and even allowed it to midnight, that would be okay from your perspective?
Yeah, I mean, we have to abide by the noise ordinance, but, yeah, absolutely.
The quiet time at 11:00 would still work for the ordinance.
Yeah, yeah.
Is that the end?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm going to give myself a minute to speak here to that question. Simply due to its proximity, there will likely be some people who might pull in and park in the Hoyt Park area. That is a city park and has a 10:00 p.m. closing time. So in our, if we reach the approval stage, I'm going to recommend that it be made clear to people who would rent the establishment.
I think it'd be very important to make it very clear.
That that is not available under the parking for this.
There would also be a supervision of parking, and I would have somebody hired in every event, on top of the wedding coordinator, on top of the, or event coordinator, on top of my 24-hour host staff that's there. I would keep a security person, just to, you know, we don't want any cars vandalized or anything else while somebody's at a wedding.
Or disappearing.
So there would be a very big supervision of parking.
That's a very good point.
I have a question down here.
Go on.
Thank you. How many employees do you expect to have?
So there would be, I would need 24 hours a day, 365 days a week. So there'd be a mix of full-time and part-time employees, some of it being from me, or my family that would be running it with me, and then others hired out besides that. On top of that, there would be housekeeping, and handyman, and the yard man, you know, somebody to take care of all the yard and the grounds. There's, I plan on putting extensive gardens in the property, so I do not want to trim all those bushes, so somebody else will be hired. So there would be several employees that this will be, I would be hiring.
Okay, so upwards of 10 or more?
Salary-wise, yes. Probably 10 would be about the max that I would probably need, depending on how many full-time or part-time people I filled in for that 24-hour period. You know, if I had three full-time people filling that, you know, well, it'd be more than three, because then I'd have two more days in the week. So that would take probably five to eight, full and part-time, and then those other employee, a couple of housekeeper, keeping people, and a couple, probably one person would be my yard person.
Thank you so much.
Absolutely.
Commissioner Moore?
Park. Is there parking around there now, other than...
So the parking would be, no, the parking that I would, there's parking in there, I would create more parking.
Okay.
Formal parking, asphalted out parking within the property. I have it designed in here for 15, it's probably going to end up more like 18 parking spots, and with a couple of accessible parking spots to make sure that I have plenty enough for people coming to the wedding, or any other event venues, or staying at the establishment and stuff, at the overnights.
So you have space to put more there?
There's space, I could easily put up 30 parking spots in there.
Okay, I'm looking at a wedding.
Yeah.
And you know, it's more than 30 cars, it's probably 30 cars in a wedding.
So the expectations, then, they would be parking across the street in the public parking, and with, that's where I would have a security person making sure people were getting across the street while their cars were being supervised, et cetera.
Public works.
Public works.
I like.
Yeah, these three laths.
Yeah, there's several laths right there.
Okay, okay. That's why I was lost, I'm like, you stay saying parking, and then, then y'all say public, our parking. Okay, so if that be the case, why couldn't they park sometimes there, Hoyt Park?
That's what you say about the time, 10:00 a.m.
It closes at 10:00.
There's no gate on it?
No.
No.
Okay.
There would not be a need, we would, I would have a need never, for probably 125 would be the most parking spots, and there would be plenty across the street.
Okay, I was just asking a question, okay.
Could I, is this a question?
Commissioner Nash?
This is for staff. So we get into Hoyt Park. Is that a city park, or is that run by, or is that leased out to the Friends of Hoyt Park? What is the technical?
It's adopted by the Friends of Hoyt Park.
So the ordinance, does it have to go by city ordinances?
Yeah.
Okay, but the city doesn't run it, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Any other commissioners? Mr. Clark?
Yes, thank you. Just back to the on-the-lot parking. If you create more, is it safe to assume that they would be behind the house, not on the front? On the front, I don't think that'd be a good idea.
It'd be either alongside or behind the house.
Okay, I mean, that's got the front landscaping and, just having it, not very particularly intrusive.
I could guarantee you, if there's any parking, there would be wonderful landscaping around it, because I don't want to look at cars, as well as my clients don't want to look at cars when they're in there. So no, it'd be very well planned.
Any parking would have to be approved by engineering?
Yeah, and I don't think I'll have a need for more than what we've already presented. It's just, there's space there for it if necessary.
Okay. Question for Mr. Goland, then. In a general sense, does our approval of the special use permit act also as a site plan approval for this proposed onsite parking? If it were to change significantly from this proposal, would we be getting back a site plan change, or only if it changed the square access?
That's probably something that you could include in your motion, that it, any additional parking onsite would be approved by engineering. That's typically, you know, how we handle a lot of that stuff anyway. Parking, according to the zoning ordinance, is actually administratively approved anyway, so...
If we have no other questions, I will entertain a motion to go back to regular order.
So moved, Nash.
Support. More.
It's been moved and supported to return to regular order. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. So we are back to our original motion to approve a special use permit. At, I'm not sure if that included our stipulations under recommendations. Did we?
So any, so you, so you have to include stipulations within...
Right, I think I asked for it just as a general approval.
Right.
Mr. Chair, I'd be prepared to make a motion.
I thought we did, and I didn't ask for the recommendations to be part of it.
Right.
So a motion to amend to include those recommendations would be appropriate.
Who's the original?
So, Bill made the motion, and, or Commissioner Oster made the motion, Commissioner Moore made the, or supported it.
So, make the motion to amend.
So I'd like to amend my motion to include the hours of operation until midnight?
And the parking.
And that any additional parking would be approved by staff?
And let's see.
And that there's no parking in Hoyt Park?
Let's see, we have two other stipulations.
To include the staff recommendations, was there modifications?
Yeah, and I have a question on one where it says, we grant that the public parking spaces fulfill it, but do we need to stipulate that they also get an agreement with the city about that?
Yeah, you could put that in there. I've already talked to the city attorney, and that's something that we would require.
We do.
Okay. So, we don't so much need to say it, they would require it.
Right. City needs to protect itself.
I still second it.
All right. So, we should vote on approving the amended?
He's still tweaking it, I think.
And also that it's approved by the city attorney?
Which part?
What we're looking for is that the 1 through 4 recommendations from staff are made part of the motion to approve. A motion to approve with those stipulations.
And plus one to approve any additional onsite parking.
Plus the three already stated, correct.
So I'm going to do, here's my motion to amend. My motion to amend is to accept the staff recommendations for approval of the special use permit to allow public assembly at 1446 South Washington, with the following limitations, and amending item number three, which is allowing the venue to run until midnight, hours of operation until midnight, also that there would be no parking in Hoyt Park, and that any additional parking would be approved by staff.
Does that sound like it covers it?
Did we get it right? I second it.
Okay. So, at this point, we are voting on the amended motion, the whole approval, or just on the amendment?
On the amendment first, and then the whole.
This is first to approve amending the motion. Any further discussion on the amendments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay, now, we, now we are voting on approval of the special use permit as amended with the staff recommendations. And that is already moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the approval, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The special use permit request is approved.
Thank you.
No thank you for moving, tagging, or pulling.
Absolutely. We are now at the public comment portion of the commission meeting. At this time, speakers shall address their remarks to the commission as a whole. Remarks shall not be addressed to individual commission members, city staff, or the audience. Speakers may ask general questions about the subject of their presentation. All such questions will be referred to city staff for appropriate follow-up. Speakers shall not ask questions of specific commission members. Each speaker is limited to three minutes, and may only speak once. Speakers should limit their remarks to business within the jurisdiction of the commission. Would anyone like to comment this evening? Any public comment?
I'd say in charge we all have it.
No public comment this evening. Next item on the agenda is old business. We have a discussion of tiny house, and this involves discussion about standards, possible changes that would require in our zoning ordinance. I wish to stress, this evening, we are just working on a discussion, we do not have it prepared as amendments to the zoning ordinance this evening. So, the staff has prepared some comments for us to look at and discuss this evening. We've all received this material. Would anyone like to begin the discussion?
I'm looking at...
Commissioner Faust?
The ordinance, or the motion that was made previously, and that motion was to permit tiny houses up to 200 square feet or more, or one in an R1 district, up to two in an R2 district, up to three in an R3 district, and not more than five tiny houses within the MU1 district, with limitations of appropriate size, screening, and campus arrangements within the multi-unit... and not more than five tiny houses within the MU1 district with limitations of appropriate size, screening, and campus arrangements within the multi-unit districts. I like that motion, um, and I'd like to state several reasons why and changes that I could see that could be made to it. In my years working with the city previously and in other jurisdictions, I never once had a complaint that a house was too small from a neighbor, never once. I think that with the cost of housing, the way it is these days, and I've been told that it's up to $300 per square foot to build a house, probably the majority of the residents of the city of Saginaw could not build a home in the city. I think that there's more of a senior population and it will grow in the next few years, and a tiny house may fit the needs of some of those people. And so I think that that's a reasonable thing to allow for smaller homes. I've visited the tiny homes that are in Detroit in an area that was put together by a nonprofit. Those houses have many different styles and they're probably as nice-looking as 75% of the homes in the city of Saginaw. I don't see any, any reason to limit them to just certain areas and in clusters. I think that a tiny home could fit into any of the neighborhoods by the requirements that were made in the motion previously. One of the things, or a couple of the things that I could see changes being made is that in an R1 district where only one would be allowed, that it be owner-occupied. And in an R2 district, that one of the two units would be owner-occupied. I can see increasing the size from 200 square feet to 250 or 300 just to meet some of the requirements of the state building standards, even though they do say that they can be as low as 190 square feet. Those are, that's what I'm gonna propose, is that we keep with that initial ordinance with whatever additional requirements people seem to put into it.
Thank you, Commissioner Faust. Commissioner Moore?
I think that when people, I know for me, when I hear tiny houses, I'm thinking about what we talked about, tiny, tiny. And so I think maybe if we change the name, and, and Mike, you are right, Commissioner Faust, I think it should not be a limitation. If it's a house, why can't it go wherever? And if the city is not in business for building houses, these will be people coming into the city to build houses. And so that might be their specialty area. I don't know. Can, can this tiny house thing, can, can, can we stop calling them tiny houses?
Mayor Moore, and if you look at your, um, report, I'm, I'm suggesting that they be renamed to a micro-dwelling unit.
Thank you. Okay, but maybe that's where I was going with your recommendation. I mean, I'm all into the housing. I'm all into building up and, and making Saginaw a better place. However, Mike, I'm sorry, Commissioner Faust, you brought up another factor in the city. And it probably won't be a lot of building. Okay, because for a general house, and that's a prefab they're telling me, it's costing 75,000. That's ground up. We talk about income, family income. Family income's not even that high. So, you know, and I said it before, all of this is a work in progress. We can change it at any given time. We can stop, we can re, we can revamp it. So, I'd like to see it changed into a micro, whatever it is, house you see it. And then, again, let's take a look at it. It, it doesn't matter. A tiny house might be cheaper or a micro. What is it? Say it again.
Micro.
Okay, well, we're a micro, whatever. That micro house might be even more effective for somebody that wanna buy.
I have a question.
Commissioner, uh, something.
Plant. Okay, so, in reading this material, I had a question with regards to, I think everyone knows that I'm against, I like micro dwellings, but I'm not in favor of 200-square-foot home. It's just not something that I think is really feasible. So can you answer the question of, if you're looking at a 200-square-foot unit and some units require you to be connected to a foundation, are they connected or are they on a slab at that point?
So, I mean, if you look at my recommendations, I am calling for them to be, uh, approved by the Michigan residential building code requirements and be permanently attached to a foundation as well as the public utilities, which all dwelling units in the city are required to be. If you wanna have a, a mobile home park, that's a different thing, but you would have to have somebody develop the mobile home park in order to have something that what they call HUD-approved homes, which don't have to be permanently attached to a foundation.
And you lose a lot of local oversight with a mobile home park.
And so, like I said, um, well, I haven't said it yet, so, I think that we talked about ADUs before. Their minimum was 400 square feet?
400 square feet, yes.
Right. So I'm, I think I'm more in favor of following the state regulation and making sure that there's some sort of foundation. But that does exclude your 200-square-foot dwelling. I think that is just too small. Um, plus with your recommendation, you talked about having it like in a community.
Yes.
Type, uh, environment. I think that's a lot more feasible and I think that having that foundation of a, of, or literally of a, uh, a foundation speaks lots to having that small home. So, that's just my opinion. Thank you.
Uh, Commissioner Whitinger and then Commissioner Clark after.
Oh, sorry. Right now, one of the things that I'm struck with is we still have allow accessory uses associated with the primary dwelling. But I, I don't, I, I actually, I agree with Commissioner Faust in many ways. I'm not sure I agree with having a just allow a, a microunit to go in on a full lot for, for R1, maybe even R2. However, we do allow accessory uses. What I wonder is, first of all, is there a minimum or a maximum requirement for accessory uses, accessory dwellings?
So, they have to be associated with a primary resident.
Right.
The minimum size for a primary resident is 600 square feet. Then the minimum size for an accessory dwelling unit is 400 square feet.
Well, then my next question is, why couldn't we use a measurement of, especially with regard to a, um, a microunit, that the microunit in an R1 or R2 district would have to be associated with the primary dwelling and with accessory dwelling? And could not be more, could not be, um, more than one-half the, um, square footage of the primary residence. It would be limited with.
So you already have a, an accessory dwelling unit. I don't understand why you're creating more.
To allow.
So you, you wouldn't be able to put two on the lot?
No, no, you wouldn't want that. I agree, you would not want that. But I'm just trying to, uh, address the question of how, of using a 200-square-foot accessory dwelling as a, um, as a microunit as opposed to the 400 limit currently existing. Is there any reason that, that, that we couldn't do that and just use a microunit?
I've given you my recommendations. You guys can do whatever you want to.
To me, that seems like it would make sense.
So, so can I, uh, clarify? So you want, you would rather decrease the accessory dwelling unit size to 200?
Well, I would, I would, what I'd like to do.
But that's totally separate than what this would be implementing.
I, I would like to see that an accessory unit could be a microunit as long as it is not more than half the size of the main unit. In other words, if it's 200 and you've got a main unit of 400, or, or now 600, I think you said, is that correct?
Yes.
You could have it down to 300 size for your, for your accessory unit.
So I think what, I think you're actually mean not less than half the size of the main unit. You're saying not half, not more than half of the.
Well.
So I guess that's a whole different part of the ordinance.
I am saying not more because I don't want it to be, uh, I want it to be, uh, in perspective to the primary unit. I don't want it to be in the same size as the primary unit. I think it needs to be, if it's an accessory unit, it needs to be a substantial amount, and that's why I said half, at most of the primary unit. I don't wanna see an accessory unit that's the same as the, as the, as the primary.
Well, in that reasoning, then you could have a hundred-square-foot accessory dwelling.
You, that's easy to address. You just say not less than a certain amount and not more than.
I do wanna interrupt you because this isn't relevant to what we're talking about. That's a different part of the zoning.
Yeah, we are talking about, not accessory dwelling.
I don't, I don't agree because accessory units could be.
Well, it is.
If you had, if you allow it. Right now, you don't allow it by basis of a 400-square-foot minimum.
We allow accessory dwelling units. This is a separate ordinance.
I know what you allow. I'm asking, it's talking right now about 400 square feet is your minimum.
Then, then what you should do is change the accessory dwelling unit to 200.
Well, that may be appropriate too, but, uh, then you could use a microunit, I suppose.
Rachel, you're up next.
Um, I wanna make a couple points that I feel like you haven't, um, done yet. Um, uh, tiny houses are one of the more cost-effective ways, um, to do two things. One, to build, um, handicapped accessible housing in a way that's safe. Um, it's possible, um, from my understanding, after consulting with an architect who worked on tiny homes, to, uh, meet the Michigan building code with a tiny home that doesn't have walls, has a bathroom, but otherwise doesn't have walls. Um, and if, if I end up in a wheelchair, that would be a great thing for me to be able to build a ground-level, um, accessible home. Um, I think the other, um, really important reason to consider tiny homes is, um, Saginaw has the opportunity for a lot of, um, we have plenty of vacant lots. Um, and it can allow neighbors to age and pace in their neighborhood. Um, so maybe a scenario would be, I would tell my larger home, I would use the proceeds of that to be able to build an accessible tiny home and I would be able to stay in my neighborhood, um, safely. Um, one of the things that's in the current, um, staff recommendations is that, um, requirements around permanent foundations. Um, those are usually used in, um, tiny home, uh, zoning and legislation, um, to exclude mobile home parks. But they also have that unfortunate effect of excluding, um, modular homes that are pre-built tiny homes. That's one of the most cost-effective ways to build. A tiny home is to have it already built for you in a, um, assembly fashion. And there's some actually really cool tiny home builders in the state of Michigan who make beautiful, well-designed, um, and pretty accessible homes, um, that could be permanently, um, bolted down, like they can have the wheels taken off. They can be installed in place, um, not in a mobile home type way, but a modular home that's placed, um, on the lot. And, um, I think we need to look at the, um, as my fellow commissioner was stating, the, um, a lot of the requirements that we've set so far are pretty big. Um, and I think if we're talking seriously about tiny homes, it's worth talking about less than 400 square feet, um, in some circumstances.
Commissioner Orange?
I wanted to address, uh, recommendations one and eight. Um, and then we've touched on it before about the clusters. To piggyback what Lisa said, in order to make it, if it's going to be an affordable home housing option for your average resident in the city of Saginaw and for them to own it, not rent it, or not buy it from a developer who, uh, built a cluster, I don't think, I disagree with it being one way only. Yes, let developers come in and build areas or clusters, but also with the proper requirements in place, for lack of better words, allow individuals, if I'm reading this correctly, a singular, I could not build a tiny home on a lot that I owned, correct? Yeah, that, that doesn't, that helps developers, but that doesn't help me, the new graduate nursing student who, I just bought this little plot of land and I just want this little house. So, I disagree with it just being one way. If we put the proper requirements in place in terms of lot size versus home size, area, I mean, it makes maybe the water a little more murky, but that makes MDUs available to everyone and not just developers.
I'm gonna take a, a spot here. If I'm reading, uh, this question's for staff, under the section about the Michigan residential building code. Adding the requirements together in there, I don't see how you can get much under 400 square feet to start with. If you have to have a, a separate bathroom, at least 190 square feet of living space, 70 square foot.
That's included in there. That bathroom would be included in the 190.
It's included in the 190.
Yep, yep. You can go with, you can go to 190. Um, but, so I just wanted to fill you in more about some of the stuff that I've learned. So you have a, a pre-manufactured home and then you have a modular, okay? And it depends on, and both can be kind of developed the same way, but one of them is based on HUD residential standards and one of them is based on the Michigan residential building code. The HUD standards allow that unit to have its undercarriage remain. You can put it on a foundation, but the other way, it would have to, the undercarriage gets removed and it actually gets permanently attached to the foundation. What this, this manufacturer told me was that just because you put it on a foundation, if that undercarriage is still there, it's easy enough to put the wheels back on and drive that thing off the lot. And he's had situations where he's financed them and they disappeared on him. So that's one of the reasons why I'm trying to avoid the HUD standards because the HUD standards are based upon mobile home parks.
Um, I was also looking at some of your, uh, research, review of other communities, and as a city, we're looking at mostly other cities, occasionally a village. It's a two-part question. Numbers-wise, how many of these are there out there? People are approving standards. Are they getting built? Secondarily, are more people applying the idea of, to use the term tiny house, but micro dwelling unit, in uncharted areas of counties, rural? Is, is someone applying this and saying, well, uh, I mean, we, I think we've all seen ads where, take a 200-foot shipping container and make your house out of it, and they'll show you cute little pictures and cut a window here and stuff. But this isn't yesterday's idea. It's been around for a little while. What is the market penetration? Where are they? Are they being developed? And in many cases, it does require a developer rather than an individual just. And in many cases, it does require a developer rather than an individual, just because of the skill level. It doesn't eliminate building code requirements for your heating, your plumbing. All of that remains. So can you give us a little idea of where it's actually happening?
I probably don't have enough of that information, but I do know that a lot, most of these are happening in the rural counties and communities where they're being put out into the, you know, the woods or wherever, in the parts where they're putting in for, in the, in the urban settings, they're typically done in these kind of cluster situations.
Thank you. And next, Rachel, I think.
Yeah. You remind me of a point that I forgot to make earlier, which is, I think that we should be encouraging new building for lots of reasons, but my primary point here is that new-built houses are up to code and are safer than the sometimes decaying housing stock that we have available at lower price points in Saginaw. So in the example of a nurse wanting to build on their vacant lot, I would be excited as a commissioner to have people have safer housing that's up to current codes and is new-built, even if it is more affordable.
Do the commissioners have some comments at the moment? Commissioner Oskasch.
Just a quick comment. This, the council was just at an MML conference. This was actually one of the sessions I attended. And one of the bullet points that I took away from there is that they said that you want to make sure that your zoning is allowing smaller lot sizes to accommodate the smaller homes. Also too, if you already have a property that has a building on there, that you should allow multiple buildings on the property for living as well, because it's, it's hard to take a property that has a home on it and then try to add another one to it. And then the last point they made was, is kind of like what Rachel was talking about and Commissioner Orange, is that this doesn't make, it makes it more affordable and try to, try to hit that middle income where people can afford a house. Because I was just kind of looking at what's the cost per square foot to build a home, and then looking at some of the sizes that we were talking about, like four hundred square feet, that's around two hundred square foot, you're going to hit around seventy-five thousand to build that house. And I do know myself, I have an RV that's twelve by forty, so that kind of gets you into four hundred and eighty square feet. It's livable, it is small, but it's not that it's not comfortable. So, you know, if you're looking at four hundred square feet, I think it's pretty, it depends on the person. It is comfortable. Two people are in that size in our, our unit, so, and we still have plenty of room. We can have like a deck on the outside that creates something for the summer. But I myself, when it gets to two hundred square feet, I'm a little claustrophobic. But anyways, that's just my comment, so.
Commissioner Moore.
You know, I guess I have some concerns, especially on the east side, because individuals bought up lots on the east side. The houses were tore down and we were allowed an opportunity to buy the house on the right, the left, the front, the back. So now, some of those lots were not big houses either. Some of them were. I guess they was called tiny homes then too. So when we talk about rezoning, are we talking about rezoning stuff that was already there? It's like the houses are gone, but all the piping and stuff is still in the ground. Is not?
No.
No.
It's just at the.
That has to be removed.
Again, when we buy the property, because I bought some, and I was highly pissed because I had to wait five years to build. And then, it's so sad, because when I wanted to build, they wanted more than my house value for me to add a garage on my land.
I just want to clarify something. So the land bank is selling lots now. I mean, and I get calls probably three or four times a day wanting to know whether or not these lots are buildable. And so they're, they're selling them left and right. The five-year period has nothing to do with not being buildable on it. You can still build on a land bank property.
Not for five years.
It's, no, you can build on it, as soon as you buy it. You can't combine it with another lot for five years because the land bank gets property taxes for that five-year period for all the holding costs they have. However, we in the city sort of have a policy that if they talk to the assessor, want to combine these lots together, they will put a note in their file, and after that five-year period, it will automatically be combined. And there's kind of a provision in the zoning ordinance that allows you, if you have a contiguous lot, that you, that the building inspector will allow you to build on that lot, even though it's not combined. That's the deal with land bank properties.
I'm going to the land bank because they cheated me.
Another question for staff, if, if this is something you leaned from your research into this topic. Somebody mentioned financing. What is the picture out there in the financing world for units like this and the associated property? Here in Saginaw, I think you'd be talking a lot about your credit unions and, and some of the more local banks. Is this able to be financed, or are we talking about needing a developer to be able to finance this type of property, rather than an individual be able to get a loan to build a house of only four hundred square feet?
So I mean, the banks are, they're, they're bound by lending practices that they have. As, I'm, I'm sure that it has to do with the individual and their ability to pay back, so I'm sure they can get loans for these. I don't, I don't know why they couldn't, but the values don't hold. I mean, if you look at a tiny home, it's not going to appreciate, it's going to depreciate very quickly.
I, I guess there's a further part to my question. Would it be a saleable mortgage loan? Is this something they, because the banks and credit unions generally turn the loan over. What is FHA's position on these? Do we, do we have any knowledge of that?
I do not.
Okay.
So I, I do want to throw a caveat in there because we're talking about a variety of types of homes, because a pre-manufactured home is different than a stick-built home. Different than, you know, if people, and one of the conversations, you know, that should be brought up is, there are a lot of prefabbed homes that would be great, that do have long lifestyles, like, long life terms. There's a lot that aren't, because one of the initial conversations that some folks at the table brought up was these houses you can buy on Amazon. If you look at those houses you can buy on Amazon, first of all, the minimum square footage is four hundred square feet. They're four, six, and eight hundred. Second of all, they say they have a twenty-year lifetime. Is that what we're looking for, twenty-year-long house? Or are we looking for something more longevity? Because then when you talk about the land, the lending practices, where's your value going to be? I mean, there is a lot of things that you'd be looking into, but.
Is that even part of this discussion?
I know, exactly, because we're really just regulating where it is.
I know, that's a good question, but that's not part of this discussion.
So the other thing I would like to throw in is, I don't know if you've read some of my comments here, but on item seven, good planning practices for urban areas is that you're trying to create this street wall where you've got, you're encouraging pedestrian traffic and that sort of thing. And it, this does not, putting in these homes on lots amongst homes that are much larger, whatever, does not encourage that kind of development. It goes against what the redevelopment-ready communities' principles are for good practices for planning. And I think likewise, it, it, it doesn't really create an atmosphere within the, within that neighborhood that you're trying to encourage for, in terms of pedestrian traffic and a sense of community. I think you're losing that. Whereas if it were clustered, then you're basically creating a community that's, that meets all those. You're, you're discouraging the sense of increasing density in a community.
Commissioner Clark, is that your hand up?
Yes, thank you. I do like the possibility of a developer having the opportunity to create a tiny home cluster unit, and I like that. And the proposal for allowing that here seems to be compatible and a good approach. But I also agree with Commissioner Orange that there needs to be an opportunity for an individual to say, I want to build a small, what do you want to call it, a micro, micro unit on a lot. And yes, I, there may even be a need to limit it to R2, for example. I suppose, so you preserve the, the nature of our one district. But I would rather see us add the opportunity for an individual to finance and build their own in a way, yes, that would need to be compatible with what you're trying to say about a wall and doing things that fit. But, and that may mean some more careful crafting of the ordinance, but I think that opportunity needs to be there. I don't want to see us exclude that because what the current proposal essentially says, no one can have a tiny house unless you can get a builder to come in and finance it. And I can't agree with that. And I think there has to be the opportunity for someone to say, I want to be my own financer. I want to build it. I can hire someone to put it on there, or I can do one of the prefab ones that need to be attached. There's a way for us to do it, and that's what I would like to see.
Commissioner Oskasch and then Commissioner Plush.
Yeah, and if you do a cluster of these homes, I could see it as a, Venice Beach has what I call the walk streets. They got about eight of them. And it's basically a sidewalk with the homes, and then your parking is behind. So the developer's going to have to develop this, and that's the best way I see that. I can't see a street with the home set back. It was really, I've never seen anything like that, because I saw this, and my, because my friend was there. And it was a very neat concept, and I do have photographs of it. But, and so, but even though the sidewalk was there, then they, most of them had fences, then there was a setback of maybe like twenty or twenty-five feet where the home was built, and then they had the rest. So it's, it fit to, to cluster the stuff together.
I just Googled the, the cost of a six-hundred-square-foot modular home, and it's between sixty and a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. That does not include the foundation. And fit and finishes, but, I mean, it seems to be, to be affordable for a nurse.
I don't have a problem with the cluster homes at all, that's fine. But I still think the opportunity to have one on a single lot is necessary for several reasons. Right now, you're talking about this wall. Well, what about all the blocks in the city where half of that is just vacant lots? At least a micro unit is a part of the wall. It's something to add to the density.
But that's why we're trying to encourage infill. And so you can have multiple units in rows to try and infill that, that area as opposed to having one little tooth in the middle of two vacant spots.
Maybe I like that one little tooth. The other thing is that in a case like for me, if my house was to burn down tomorrow, I'm not sure I could build another house the same size, but I want to stay in that neighborhood. So to build a, a micro unit would be good for me. It would fit my needs. It would keep another person in the city, one you may not want here, but it would keep one, another person here. And it would give them the opportunity, you know, let's face it, as, as we age, we don't need as much space. And there's some people that look at things from an ecological standpoint. America builds houses that are much bigger than most of the rest of the world. And we're wasting a lot of, a lot of resources doing that. So I think that's another reason to look at, at micro units in, in all areas of the city.
Commissioner Wettiger.
Just a quick note that as a pedestrian, thinking about the pedestrian experience, my favorite part of taking walks in neighborhoods is actually people's yards. So having more yardage, smaller house would be a great pedestrian experience for me, just like more park in my neighborhood in some ways visually.
So can I just ask the commission to start focusing in on some things that you want me to start working on? Because this seems to be going back and forth.
And I, I think I need to interject this. There's a lot of discussion that I think is coming towards staff, but there's no consensus at the table. So, you know, staff has done the research, they've put the recommendations out there. I, I think the discussion really at this point isn't to come back to staff unless it's by motion, by approval of a majority of the commission, because individually, comments are kind of coming at staff with no consensus for direction. So I really do think at this point that there needs to be motions to staff if the commission wants staff to undertake additional work at this point.
Thank you, Bob. I was about to make the same comment that we're either going to have some questions to have you work on some more, but we've had a very good discussion of this. So from commission members, I guess I would entertain if someone wants to make a motion for directing staff to provide some additional information in particular areas. But Commissioner Clark?
I'm prepared to make a motion, it'd be subject to the amendments or something. In general, the motion would be to direct staff, A, to continue with the idea of cluster as an option, cluster of micro units, but also to allow individual, individually-developed micro units, I'm going to say in only R2 and, and multi-unit areas, not R1, for individual development on a lot. If staff thinks it's appropriate to limit the size of that lot, that could be part of the recommendation. So that if they thought you should have a cluster on a larger-sized lot, that would be part of it as well. But it would be, R2 would have, could allow at least one on a lot. Not talking accessory units, just one on a lot, keeping the cluster as part of the proposal as well.
It's a very long motion.
It's a long motion. All right. We'll try and, we'll try and reduce it. That staff come up with a proposal regarding R2 and more mixed-use areas to have a single dwelling at least, micro dwelling of two hundred square feet or greater, and keeping the cluster as an option for developers.
That's already in here, my recommendation.
Well, not for the end of R2. I know you're, I'm just saying keep it. I'm not trying to exclude it.
You are specifying smaller, though.
Yes, well, two hundred square feet.
The recommendation is for four hundred. So essentially, the change would be to go down to two hundred again?
For a micro unit, yes.
And allow it an R2.
One, at least one on a lot.
In R2?
Yes.
And others?
And in the MDU unit.
In MU? One, MU what?
MU1?
No, I think it's MU2. We have MU2, right?
Yes. I think it would also be a good exercise for you all to look at the zoning and drive around into those neighborhoods, and try to envision what you are directing, and just keep in mind, this is not just a five-year thing, 10-year thing. This is the future of the city. So, just keep that in mind as well.
Well, the motion on the table can be defeated, that's fine, but if not, the other option is for us to take, not able to postpone this, for more study. That's the other option.
Yeah, before there's any more discussion, we need to have a second, if there's going to be a second.
Is there a second to the motion?
There's not a second.
Then the motion dies.
Someone else can make a motion.
Commissioner Moore and then Commissioner Orange.
I make a motion that we continue to look into this, into the microhouse and changing it into some of the recommendations that the staff has provided already. I don't want it to die, so I guess I need help with how to continue. I want the staff to keep looking. I don't want it to die, because if we don't put a motion on the floor, and if we don't settle something, it'll die. So, I guess I'm asking staff...
And, and we're looking for that specificity, because we've looked into it, we've brought forward recommendations. So, what else are we looking into if we're continuing to look into it?
Commissioner Orange.
I like what Commissioner Clark had to say, most of it, but I would like to suggest an amendment to his suggestion and include R1. I'm not understanding why we wouldn't. I'm not opposed, 200 square feet, that's a little tiny, I like the 400, but I don't understand why not R1, so, and I would also further recommend that staff consider maybe doing it a case-by-case basis. Explore ways that an individual, where we would look at the proposed area, almost like people come to us now, they're almost the exact same way, unless it gets unmanageable, right? But a way in which we could have it done on an individual basis, according to lot size and what's in the area, and, you know, I don't know if I make it sense.
That's what my recommendation is, is they be approved by special use, so they would all come to you.
Yeah, okay, and add R1. That's all I have.
But was, are you making a motion?
I'm making a motion that we add R1 to the amendment that...
That there can't be an amendment, his motion is dead.
Okay, okay, so I'm asking that we add R1 and R2, or to the, that we have more than...
To allow MDUs in R1 and R2.
In R1 and R2 to own, or manufacture, or have small homes.
At what size?
Um, I would say 400 square feet, no. No, well, yeah, 400, minimum is 400 square feet.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, and I'm unclear, is this an actual amendment to the zoning ordinance that we're asking at this point?
I think the direction is for staff to bring back...
To bring that back.
A recommendation for R1 and R2 MDUs at 400 square feet.
Okay, so this is a direction to staff for specific language in accomplishing that. It's been moved and seconded.
I have a question. I don't hear that it would be individual units. If we, with the motion as stated, it sounds like it would continue to be only clusters in R1.
No, this was individual.
But that's, that's what the proposal is from staff, and all's we've had is a motion to include R1 and R2. That means, if you follow the proposal now, it's a cluster, so if...
Can we make amendments?
I understood what she was saying.
I just said...
She said that at the beginning.
Yeah, individual units.
All right, okay.
Call for the vote.
Yeah, it's been moved, seconded, we've been asked to take the vote on whether to direct staff to bring us language about allowing MDUs in R1 and R2, individual units with the minimum size of 400 square feet.
This is second, pointed word to, if she called for the vote, we have to take a vote on that.
There needs to be a second, I'll call for a vote.
Second.
Yolanda seconded it, didn't you?
No, not for call for the vote.
I called for the vote.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, she's calling to end the discussion, so I'll second it.
All right, this is just to get to the recommendation. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, any opposed?
Yes.
There's a aye.
Roll call.
Someone wishes to continue discussion, please have a roll call.
Commissioner Bland?
Yes.
Mr. Faust?
No.
Mr. Clark?
I'm going to say no, I didn't hear enough discussion.
Mr. Whittinger?
Yes.
Mr. Millen?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Wizzy, which one you want?
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Nash?
Yes.
Mr. Orange?
That was my turn.
Yes.
Mr. Oystash?
Yes.
The ayes have it.
Okay, so now, we are voting on the motion to ask staff to create language to bring back to us to allow MDUs in R1 and R2 as individual units with a minimum square footage of 400 square feet. Is that correctly summed, then?
Correct.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No?
No.
No. We need a roll call vote.
Commissioner Bland?
Yes.
Commissioner Faust?
No.
Commissioner Clark?
No.
Commissioner Whittinger?
Yes.
Commissioner Millen?
No.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Nash?
Yes.
Mr. Orange?
Yes.
Mr. Oystash?
Yes.
The ayes have it.
All right, we will, I don't think we need to include it, but obviously, we're looking for something maybe along the lines of our next meeting, but no later than, say, a couple meetings.
We'll, we'll be discussing it later in the agenda, but because of the structure of the next meeting, it might be November.
That's, that's what I was going to say, maybe two meetings. Okay. Okay, I don't think we need anything else. We've had quite a spirited discussion about this, and have some staff direction. No, I know, I'm going with that, that's what I'm saying, we're off this topic. We're going to other business, which I assume is a staff presentation to us about the boards and commission meeting on October 28.
Yeah, just more of a comment, so during our meeting, October 28, we, we are required by the redevelopment-ready communities designation certification that we have a joint meeting with some of the boards and commissions. And so, I would like to hold that during our meeting on October 28. You, as the commission, would be holding the meeting, and then we would invite representatives from the other boards and commissions to avoid the open meeting act with those folks. And then, my plan is to ask them to provide us with, first, a brief overview of what their activities have been recently, and then, three things that they are proposing in the near future, and then, if there is time or an interest in discussing, how might some of these boards and commissions collaborate in some ways.
Could you give us a little rundown on which boards and commissions? Obviously, we're thinking zoning.
Yeah, so, well, I'm not sure I'm going to invite the zoning board of appeals, because they just deal with appeals to the zoning. So, what I'm thinking is the human planning commission, the downtown development authority, and the historic district commission.
Ah, yes, I figured the first two...
And the brownfield.
And the brownfield redevelopment. We already have two city council members, so probably, I mean, they're welcome to come to the public meeting, but I probably won't give them a formal invitation.
Just for a question, so what is this meeting for? Why do you have to have it?
Um, just to make you aware and make them aware of what you all do, and, and what you're doing, and then, what you're planning to do in the future.
Have you done this before?
Yes.
Yeah, we actually have. Normally, it's held during the strategic planning commission, or planning meetings for the city council. We did have one when we were developing the master plan, I don't know if you remember that, you may not have participated in that.
Yeah, okay.
But we had several boards and commissions during that meeting as well.
As well as the adoption of the marijuana.
Yeah, that was way back.
So, in terms of the meeting, it will be our regular meeting, we will be the only body taking action at that meeting.
Correct, so we would be doing some of the regular meeting activities, like passing the agenda and the minutes. It'd be nice if we could limit anything else, and then just go out of regular order and hold the other meeting.
So, a lot of this will be somewhat of a presentation from them, but not, nothing they're presenting is requiring action on our part.
And then you all as well?
Oh, yeah.
Is that what, yeah, you've been working on, your plans?
What does this RRC stand for?
Redevelopment Ready City.
We need acronym book.
I agree.
We need acronym book.
They're changing, they're changing the next one.
Yeah.
Representatives from those other boards and commissions, or like, two new representatives from each other.
Well, I'm going to ask them to decide what they want to do, but, I mean, they're all invited, but...
They can all attend, but only have one or two speaking.
Right.
And participating.
For venue, do we think this room will work?
Well, I will let you know, because I'm not sure yet, we're still working on that. It might happen at the CAC building.
Yeah, there's lots of rooms spread out there.
Yeah, almost too much, so I'm not sure yet.
Yeah, okay.
We're still working on the logistics of that.
No location yet.
Yeah.
Yeah, because this is, this is my question, I didn't address it right. Has, have you ever had a meeting like this, at a regular meeting? That's what I was getting to, not at a regular meeting.
Just the strategic planning session is technically a regular meeting.
They typically go through their order of agenda, and then they go out of order.
Yeah, well, run it kind of, as though the strategic planning session is run at council, where your regular order of business will proceed, will go out of...
See, I've only been on this board for like 20 years.
Regular order, yeah.
And I'm just like, this never happened before.
No.
That's what I was getting at.
Keeps you young, Jack.
Keep you on your toes.
Yeah, sure.
Commissioner Moore?
So, I have a question. So, we have this big pretty book. Is this the final copy of the document?
Yeah, that's the final copy. They're numbered, you are given one, and when you leave the planning commission, you need to give it back.
Oh, no. Because I'm accused of not turning in my ordinance when I left council.
Well, I don't know why I couldn't write in it, I mean, you gotta be...
I have book number five.
We also did check with the people we had found it, that when we do make amendments and things, they can put them back in there, so it may be a little wonky, but we'll be able to change it along the way, too.
Can we write in there? No.
I mean, you could, I would prefer that you not, but that's why they make sticky notes.
Somebody else will eventually see your love notes.
Occasional coffee stain.
I'm just asking, I'm saying... Okay.
They didn't charge us a deposit for them, so I guess there's no...
Remember, see if it gets dated. We're still on TV, right?
I would like to know how you're going to handle your stuff.
I did have one question. Is this live on the website, then, in this form? Okay, that was one thing we wanted to know. I believe that's the end of our agenda, which means I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Support. It's been moved and supported to adjourn the meeting. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We stand adjourned.